Paul Ryan. We're in the area. The Hammond County Legislature Committee meeting session, the Honorable Attorney Presiding, please remain standing.
I'm going to call the Thursday, May 19th, 2022, mid-even of the Hammond County Legislative Body to order at this time. I'm going to ask Mayor Britton if you would lead us as we pray, please.
Please pray with me. Father God, we come to you this afternoon just giving you thanks for this day that you've given us and all the blessings that you provide us. Lord, we pray tonight that you guide us in all decisions that we make, that it all pleases you and is for your benefit and for your kingdom and this community. Lord, we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor. This time I'm going to ask Commissioner Goan if you would lead us in our pledge to the flag.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seen. Commissioners, if you've not already done so, please turn your mics on. We have a problem with one of those. Okay. Let's do the roll call, please.
I'm the one.
Twelve present, two absent.
We do have a quorum present, so we are open for business. We have no recognitions or nominations at this time. Chairman Step of the Calendar and Rules Committee, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 3A, approval of consent calendar items, I'll put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of 3A, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 3B, approval of regular calendar items, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of 3B, 12 ye, 0A.
The calendar is approved.
I'll have it, Chairman.
The Chair would entertain a motion at this time that the consent calendar be approved.
Oh, move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Doty moves, and Commissioner Akerd seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of 4A, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved. At this time, we would entertain comments from the public concerning agenda items only. We do have two requests that have been submitted for five minutes, and so Edna Green, you're recognized at this time.
Edna Green, 4981 Cameron Road. I noticed that you have under the Finance Committee some items regarding the jail. I would ask you to pay close attention to everything involving the jail, change orders and all, and be more vigilant in checking the bills and asking questions. Last time that I sat in a meeting with Mr. Pettit, he discussed with you folks about E and O insurance for the architects. Not one of you asked a question about that, and most of you, if you've done business, should know what E and O insurance is. It's errors and omissions. Tax preparers, businesspeople carry it to cover their liability. I would appreciate it if yous would man up or woman up, whatever you choose to use tonight, and start asking questions. Some of you will be leaving this in September, so please stand up and act like men and a woman and ask questions. It's the taxpayers' money that you're burning tonight. It's not your money. It's the taxpayers' money, and that money will be used other places if you conserve it. We are in deathly need of better roads. Most roads that you're on will jolt you to death, like you're riding on a Conestoga wagon. And for you young folks that don't know what that is, it's a rough ride. But yous need to step up. Some of you have made the remark that you do what was right, that you were a team player. I'm not asking you to be team players tonight. I'm asking you to do what's right. Stand up for the citizens of Hammond County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, Lyndon Noe, you're recognized.
Lyndon Noe, Joe Stevens Road. I had put on the request, item, Agenda Item 10 XX or 20. That is the public safety projects or removing money from their debt service and putting into architects' public safety projects. It's for the 540 North Jackson Street House, which I believe, please to be corrected if I'm wrong, I believe that's the former Hyde House. And then 325 East Third North Street. I think Mr. Britton could tell us more about the East Third North Street and perhaps any connection he has to that organization. And as Ms. Green said, it would be very appropriate for you to ask those questions, or perhaps he'll volunteer it. The other item I would like to mention, in your packet, you have information about debt service on the jail. Now, of course, there's been mention about, oh, we got it a premium, you know, we're paying 91 million for 98 million, and remarks like that, but nobody's ever talked about the interest we are paying on whether it's 91 million or 98 million or whatever it is. So be sure you look in your packet and be sure you know that when you issued that bond, it wasn't just 91 million. It is projected to be another 63 million in interest. So we have roughly $154 million jail justice center. What could we have done with that much money if we had just built a simple jail and connected it to a renovated justice center? The last thing I would mention on the agenda is the monthly checks. As you all know, you're being asked to approve checks that have already been written, cut, and sent out. Probably most of them have been cashed already. That is such a joke. There needs to be a better way, a more accountable way of addressing approval of checks, or just forget it. But when you do get to that, as I have asked before, I challenge any one of you, just one of you, to ask the county attorney in his bills, and you can make it for 2022, has he been including in those invoices that you're going to be approving payment of, payment for his attendance at the Finance Committee meetings and the Hammond County Legislative Body meetings? Because if he is, or if he has, and I'm just talking about 2022, I think he knows what he bills for. I hope he does, then you should know that before you approve possibly paying him a second time for what he's already been paid for. Remember, he gets a salary of $100 a month under the Private Act for two things, for attending Finance Committee meetings and the Legislative Body meetings. He's paid for that. Is he billing a second time? And are you going to, if he is, if he is, are you going to approve a double payment? As Ms. Green said, it's the public money, and of course, most of you, I'm sure, are property taxpayers and sales tax and all the other fun things we get to pay, wheel tax. You should be concerned for your own money and for the money of those 65,000 residents of Hammond County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the Commission regarding agenda items? You'll have three minutes to do so.
Chris Black, 7335 Evelyn Circle in Talbot. Tonight, I would like to address Agenda Item 10C and Agenda Item 10B. We'll start with Agenda Item 10C, dealing with the American Recovery Plan funding. In an email dated 10/25/21 from Mayor Britton, the subject is questions about the Justice Center financial plan. He says that the ARPAL allows its funds to be used to support five main categories of recovery expenses. The first, supporting public health expenditures. The second, to address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency. The third, to provide premium pay for essential workers. The fourth, to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And the fifth, and this is the one that I want to focus on, to replace lost public sector revenue. In the budget meeting, I guess it was just this past Monday, I get my days confused. I apologize if I'm incorrect on that. He said that Hammond County is set to receive 12.6 million ARP money. The county has drawn down 6.3 million and will draw down the remainder in May-June 2022. Something that I want to kind of hit on here, it's just the use of this ARP money. If you look at Prong 5, which was the replacement of lost public sector revenue, it seems that communities, particularly ours, I'll even bash Knox County, and you guys know how much I love Knox County, they're using this basically willy-nilly, I hate to use that term, but that's kind of what it seems to be, just to fill the void where money didn't necessarily come in for these projects. But my problem goes even further, and I've been accused of lying about this by some of the Commissioners and heck, even our mayor, in saying that the county's financial position is weaker than what you guys would have us believe. It seems to me, and again, maybe this is just me thinking this way, but when we look at Item 10B, which is the bond issue, and then we take what Ms. Noe just said, that it will, the bond due to interest will get us at 154 million, and you guys say that I'm lying, some of you say I'm lying, when I say that it's 129 million, we've now seen that jump due to interest. I'm not lying about this issue. And then Mayor Britton even admits in the same email dated 10/25/21 that if we need additional financing for any additional project, it will require additional revenue. My question to you guys is once again, how do governments get additional revenue? It's called a tax increase. Now, I know it's before the election, and y'all don't want to use the term "tax increase", but it's coming, and I just want to be on record of warning the people of Hammond County that if they don't do something and wake up and quit voting R instead of, you know, just straight down the dag gum ticket R, we're going to get another tax increase.
This is not a political campaign. I think we need to stay on topic instead of worrying about Republican and Democrat.
I did say on topic, I'm talking about the American Recovery Plan.
R and D, yeah, right.
It's time set. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the Commission? Hearing none, then at this time, we are going to recess as the Hammond County Legislative Body and reconvene as a beer board to consider a beer permit for a market on Henley Road, Moorestown, Tennessee. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor or against this beer permit, now would be a good time to do so. I believe, Mr. Patel, you're here, so if you want to come to the podium.
So the beer permit is, the address is the home address, but the beer store name is Remi Market, which is located in Whitesburg. The store name is Remi Market, but the address is for the Whitesburg, it's near to the Whitesburg Road.
Okay.
So the address on that is just the home for the business?
Okay, thank you for that correction.
Mr. Patel, do you have any past experience of violation of selling beer to a minor?
Yes, I do one. When I just opened up this business and started in Jefferson County, I was just 21 at that time, but I had the license after that for like nine years right now. After that, I never had. So when I started businesses, the first time I had that experience that I sold to a minor, but after that, after eight years, I had the license and everything in Moorestown, Hammond County City, but we checked ZIDs and everything, and we never sold no one after that.
Are there any other violations that you've had with the beer board in the past?
No. 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 Mr. Chairman, that is inconsistent with the information that I have received, and it's been within the 10-year period of time, too.
Okay. Anyone else?
Chairman. Yeah, I was just going to reiterate that my understanding that he's had like four in the last 10 years, four felonies.
I think most of us have that information for us.
Mike Black. I just got a beer permit and a speaking agreement, that's all I got.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Patel. You can have a seat. Any comments from the audience? We're going to close this portion and reconvene as a Hammond County Legislative Body, and the next item on the agenda is the beer permit for this establishment. What is the Wheel of the Body?
It's on the board.
It's on the board. We need a motion. To approve or disapprove?
Chairman, I make a motion, we disapprove it at this time.
Okay, we have a motion that we disapprove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Did you get Mr. Goan to the board?
Yeah, I'll need him to select the second, please.
Yeah, select. All right, is there, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Chairman, I'd like to make sure what we're voting, how we're voting, this motion is for denial.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what the motion is.
And the denial, again, would be for violations within the last 10 years?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 7A, 10 ye, 0A.
All right, the permit is denied. Okay, we're going to, once again, recess this body, and we're going to reconvene to consider a resolution to amend the zoning map of Hammond County by rezoning District 5 tax map 049 parcel 006.01 and District 5 tax map 041 parcel 010.00 that's located on Sugar Hollow Road. You want to address that?
Certainly.
Okay.
And good evening to the Commission. This request comes from property owners Charlotte Long, Anna LeMans, John LeMans, and George LeMans. They've said that they have submitted their request to rezonate two properties located along South Sugar Hollow from A1, which is agriculture and forestry, to I1, which is the county's industrial district. Both parcels are within the city's urban growth boundary area. The larger of these two parcels is 35 acres in size and located opposite the access for Clinch River Hardwoods and Hideaway Doors, which are both zoned for industrial use. The second parcel, which is 19 acres in size, is south of the first parcel, about a quarter of a mile. The property sits across from Ready Mix Concrete Plant, which is again zoned for industrial and commercial uses. The applicants have been approached by a company wishing to use both lots for the storage of new and recycled asphalt materials and large equipment used for these same companies. Possible future use would include a manufacturing plant and/or concrete plant, which are both allowed within the county's industrial zoning district. For the city's growth plan, rezoning requests in the UGV go before the City Planning Commission for their recommendation, and the Moorestown Regional Planning Commission did vote to forward a request to approve, or voted to approve the request to the Hammond County Commission at their April meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Do any of you have any questions you want to ask her before we receive public comments? I don't think they have any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone present who wishes to address either for this rezoning or against this rezoning? Hearing no comments, then we're going to close the comment section and reconvene as a Hammond County Legislative Body. And Item Number Nine, the Chair would entertain a motion dealing with this rezoning request.
So moved.
All right, push your button on your screen. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 9A, 12 ye, 0A.
The request is approved. Chairman, the Board of the Finance Committee, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Item 10A, the approval of the monthly checks, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any, any comments? Hearing none, then let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10A, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10B, Resolution 2211, interest earnings from bond issue, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10B, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10C, Tennessee ARPA spend money, that's, I put that in the form of a motion as well.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10C, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10D, Air Med Care Network membership, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10D, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10E, Banking Bid, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10E, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F1, Hammond County Board of Education Budget Amendment 6, increase of $1,488,540.75, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion.
Item 10F1, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F2, Fund 101 Archives and Preservation of Records for $8,680, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion.
Item 10F2, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F3, Fund 101 Circuit Court for $1,500, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F3, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F4, Fund 101 for the Coroner, that's $7,800, put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F4, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F5, Fund 101 County Clerk's Office for $10,000, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F5, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F6, Fund 101 Courtroom Security for $100, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote the motion, then.
Item 10F6, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F7, Fund 101 for Jail, $24,000, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote the motion, then.
Item 10F7, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F8, Fund 101 for Jail, $1,000, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, then.
Item 10F8, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F9, Fund 101 for Juvenile Court, $250, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, then.
Item 10F9, we have 11 ye, 0A, and one abstain.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F10, Fund 101 for Litter Grant Supplement, that's $4,537, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, let's vote the motion.
Item 10F10, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F11, Fund 101 Other Facilities Maintenance, $5,600, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Step, you're recognized.
Mr. Yor, Chairman, my bad.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Cutshot.
Item 10F11, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F12, Fund 101 Parks and Fair Boards, $4,850, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F12, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F13, Fund 101 for Property Assessor, $800, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Step.
Item 10F13, 12 ye, 0A.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F14, Fund 101 Rabies and Item 10F14, Fund 101 Rabies and Animal Control for $2,675. I put that in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
Mayor Burton, answer the question.
It's moving money within the Animal Control Budget to cover overtime where we've had some vacancies in the Animal Control Officers. And we've had more overtime for the one who's been on duty while we hire. So we've moved money from the deputy line and the longevity line to the overtime line, into the supply line. So it's just an internal movement of money.
Anyone else? Let's vote the motion, then.
Item 10F14, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F15, Fund 101 Civil Defense for $687. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, then.
Item 10F15, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F16, Fund 101 Sheriff's Department for $22,486.40. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F16, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F17, Fund 116 for Garbage and Sanitation Department, $81,000. But then...
We need a motion and a second. Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
Randy, is this part of the money where they wanted to buy parts?
Yes, it's for additional parts to last through the end of the budget year.
Which ends next, this month, next month?
Correct.
Why can't that be put in this next year's budget?
Yeah, it is. Well, he's going to have repairs during the next month. So we need money in this year's budget for that. And then we have increased the garbage budget, I think $25,000 for this type of thing.
So this $81,000 won't be coming up anymore? Won't be coming up in this year's budget?
This is diesel fuel and gasoline included in this budget amendment, too. It's not all maintenance. We've got $50,000, which might be an operation, but we're going to get through that with that line item. And then there's $26,000 for diesel fuel and $8,000 for gasoline. There's $2,000 for tow services. We've had more tow this year than we've had in the past. So it's four items included in this budget.
How much is the maintenance money? How much, how much you talking about there, Barry?
We started with $100,000, I believe.
I mean for parts.
Well, this maintenance and repair line item includes parts, oil. Might be a high-locked cylinder, it might be an engine part, it might be an emission part, it might be anything. All that's included in that line item.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Pull, the dollars go back into the fund if they're not needed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So this is only to cover anything that we have a shortfall on?
Yes. There's an aging fleet and it's taken more of parts and maintenance items. It's gone up in cost this year, so it's a combination of things.
Anyone else? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F17, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F18, Fund 116 for Sanitation Management. That's $7,000. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F18, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F19, Fund 122 for Drug Enforcement. It's $900. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F19, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F20, Fund 128 for Drug Use Abatement Fund for $5,000. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Neesmith.
Item 10F20, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F21, Fund 131 Highway Department for $3,000. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Item 10F21, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F22, Fund 131 for Highway Department, $28,760. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F22, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F23, $151 for Debt Service, $114,251. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F23, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10F24, Fund 101 Sheriff's Department for $3,900. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10F24, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBoort. At this time, the chair will recognize Commissioner Chairman Chris Cutshaw of the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Before we start in Personnel, I'd like, we just covered a lot of stuff in the Finance Committee. I think it ought to be duly noted that all of that was inter-fund changes, except for one. And that was the $7,800, I think, for the Coroner. Something we couldn't help. So I just want, you know, there was a lot of action there. And in our work session, we covered this. I just wanted everybody to understand that all this that changed hands was already inter-fund balance changes. Now, back to the Personnel Committee. Item, item 11A, the Educational Reimbursement Program. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 11A, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 11B, the Educational Support Policy. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 11D, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Cutshaw. This time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Goins of the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 12A, Recommendation by the MHTIS Hamlin County Planning Commission and County Highway Department for the new street naming, Adley Street. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 12A, 12 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Goins. At this time, we will entertain general comments in the item that's not on the agenda. And we do have two requests to speak five minutes. The first is Edna Green, you're recognized.
Edna Green, 4981 Cameron Road. I know that there were a few of you that will not be here after September. So I'd like to ask you, you know, that voted to sue us over what you call the placard to be men and women and withdraw that and take it off the books so that the new commissioners don't have to clean up your mess. Commissioner in my district voted for that. And I am here to tell you, you know it wasn't right. You know Mr. Curtis lets you know it wasn't right. So you need to be men and little woman and clean up your mess. You don't need to leave it for somebody else to have to come behind you and do it when you folks that have lost the election leave us. That's the first thing. Second thing. In your executive meeting with Mr. Christopher Capps quite a while back, he discussed the lawsuit that I had against him for double dipping or double charging Hamlin County. For the citizens in the office that have no idea what I am talking about, there is a public act on the, on the Tennessee law that Mr. Capps has paid $100 a month to attend the finance and the commission meetings. Up to 2018, and I haven't caught it the last little bit, I know you've done it once or twice. He double billed. In other words, he took the money and billed again. Now, I don't know about you, I don't pay for my groceries twice, do you? I don't pay my paper bill twice for the same month, do you? I'm asking you to be men and women and stand up and do something about this before you that lost the election leave the office. You know, we're quick to vote for it. None of you have been men or women enough to ask the questions about it. I passed out packets showing what was submitted to the court. So if you looked at your packet, you have no way of telling me that you know nothing about it. Now, some of you have asked, but very few of you. Several of you that have left have not asked. So you need to do your job. Your job is just like mine. If I don't do my job with towing, it don't get done. You need to be men and woman and do your job tonight. That's the first thing. Second thing, third thing. Our Rules Committee has not met in quite some time. I don't know what happened. I don't know if it fell in a hole. Our funds got more than you bargained for. Again, you need to be men and little woman. Do your job, clean up your mess. Don't leave it for somebody else. Somebody gave me a congratulation broom not too long ago to sweep up the mess with. I need to pass it on to some of you folks, and you need to clean up your mess. It's not fair to the new commissioners that are coming in in September to have to clean up the mess that some of you folks have left. Now, some of you have not. So the ones that you have nothing in, I'm being you like I'm the Baptist preacher. Take what's yours, leave the rest of it alone. It's not for you if, if you didn't get into this mess. But for you that got in it, you know what you did. You need to be men and woman and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next request is from Linda Noe. You're recognized at this time. She's got five minutes.
Thank you. And thank you all for staying here, unlike Mr. Stepp. Essentially, I have a lot of repetition from what Ms. Green said. You voted to sue citizens. If you're going to do it, tell your attorney to go on and do it. It took him six months to sue me on your camera lawsuit. It's already been quite a while on this one, too. And if you're not going to, rescind it. That's what you do when you make a mistake or you decide you're not going to go forward with something that you've already passed. So make up your mind. It is truly not right. I'm not talking about the commissioners, but it's not right to the public or to those citizens who are wearing a tiny little piece of foam that you went nuts about. Check with Mr. Curtis. I understand Mr. Britton checked with Mr. Curtis and was told, mm, that's no problem, that's not suable. I think Mr. Neesmith talked to Mr. Curtis and knows that as well. So rescind it or go on. And that goes equally for Mr. Goins' lawsuit. He's, he's very eager to sue people, too. He wants a declaratory judgment action to let a constable or a deputy or maybe a sergeant-at-arms, if you decide to do that, remove people that disobey the rules of this body. Go on and do it. Or rescind it. Quit playing games. You're adults, we're adults. Sue us or rescind it. The other item, or one other item I'd like to mention is when you had your audit, there was a mention of a fraud, waste, and abuse hotline with the comptroller. There's also a law that applies to public officials that you have to report when you have credible evidence of fraud or waste or abuse or illegal activity, different things like that. You're supposed to report it within five days. You might think about that and some of the things that have been given to you regarding the Hale House, given to you regarding changing draft minutes. It was very amusing to hear Mr. Britton say, well, those aren't even public documents. Why don't some of you check that out? Through CTAS or the Tennessee Coalition for Open Government or any number of other entities. The last thing would be Ms. Green's lawsuit. You know, again, we're playing games. You would not and you will not ask Mr. Capps if he is billing you or has billed you since 2018 when he said he was going to quit, if in the interim he has billed for attending Finance Committee and legislative body meetings. You just go ahead and rubber stamp those checks and you, you know, accept the consent agenda with the county attorney's bills in it. And you don't have the nerve to find out what it is you're paying. And I'm sorry if I bored some of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
All right, guys. Chris Black, once again. I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it. I was just, in the last comment I made, accused of playing politics. So since this is general comment, let's talk a little bit about politics. Commissioner Hahn, in one of your flyers, you used the county logo. The county logo was never intended to be used for political purposes either. The First Amendment, in the language of the First Amendment, it establishes a prohibition against government making laws or enforcing policies, abridging the freedom of speech or to petition the government for a redress of our grievances. That's simply what I was trying to do, whether you believe it or not. And I think there's some pretty poignant words here from the Archbishop Desmond Tutu. If you're neutral in situations of injustice, you've chosen the side of the oppressor. If the elephant has its foot on the tail of a mouse, and when I say elephant, I'm not trying to make that political, just using the animal elephant, and you say that you are neutral, the mouse will not appreciate your neutrality. Now, Facebook, it's, it's a good library, if you will, of what our elected officials have to say, what I have to say, what any of these folks or anybody in... Now, Facebook, it's, uh, it's a good library, if you will, of what our elected officials have to say, what I have to say, what any of these folks or anybody in, good Lord, living in the 21st century just about has to say. And I find it interesting that the very one accusing me of playing politics on May 3rd not only went after a group of citizens, the Coag Group, accusing them of wanting to hoard tax money, forge no progress, and give little way in the, and give little in the way of safety, then went down to accuse folks like me of speaking about power and how we think it should be used, and then saying that we're going to throw the county into poverty, see a lot of abandoned factories. And before I'm accused of lying, right here's the post, anybody wants to see it after the meeting. Guys, I've called for civility, and I know in the last commission meeting, I said something that was god awful. I admit that, and I've tried my best to apologize for it. I truly have. But come on, we're all Hamlin County citizens. I know that a lot of us may not like one another, and I get that, that's just normal. But if we're going to see this county grow and we're going to get things back on track, I beg of you, I don't care if you're Republican, a Democrat, a Communist, a, a black man, a white man, or whatever, we're going to have to work together. Now, Mayor Britton and I have our differences, and those will play out over the next few months. A lot of you commissioners have your differences with your opponents if you're running against someone. But let's do the best we can to at least try to keep it civil, and I get carried away, I admit that, I do, but I'm going to do my best. Let's all work together in this. We can keep these campaigns clean and we can get this county running right again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the Commission?
Bonnie Ballington, 317 St. Phil Street, Whitesburg. I would like to reiterate what Linda and Edna said about these insane lawsuits. Don't leave them hanging out there. Either do it or put it behind us. It's just uncalled for to have this hanging in the air. It doesn't do anything but breed hard feelings. Now, one other thing I want to talk about concerns the jail. I don't know if any of you remember, a couple of years ago, maybe even longer, I stood right here and touched on the fact that you were building a three-story jail on what is known as karst topography. I wonder how many of you actually know anything about karst topography, what it is and what it does. Being in Andy Pettit's, right, last report, he touched on karst topography and what it was, but he didn't go into detail, he didn't want to go into detail, because if you know what karst topography is, what it can do, is capable of, it would scare you. And I just hope and pray that you don't get this jail half-built or, heaven forbid, built, and inmates and employees in there, and the whole thing go falling in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Kyle Walker, 405 Frank Road. I've been asked by the people of Water's Edge and the area around Bolt Lodge Road to bring this to the Commissioners. We have a gate there on Bolt Lodge Road. I'm not saying it needs to be locked or unlocked, but if we're going to have a sign that says this is locked at a period of time and unlocked at a period of time, why isn't it being enforced? If it's not going to be enforced, let's take the signs away. Remove the gate, take the signs away, there's no reason for it to be there. But also, some things that I've noticed the last couple of weeks that I've went back and forth on Bolt Lodge Road. We have a problem with people hanging around Bolt Lodge Road with drugs and alcohol being a problem. You find needles laying around the lakeside as well as at the parking area, as well as beer cans, liquor bottles, and things like that strung off on the landing there and on the beach next to that. Okay? We have a mud hole there that has became a place for people to go do donuts, ride around, and spin out in their cars, causing mud to sling on other vehicles as well as the roadway. Those things now need to kind of be addressed. The road is growing over with bushes and things into the roadway, making it harder for people to see. There's not a lot, a lot of light in that area. Okay? There's people hanging down there at nighttime in their vehicles in the wooded areas that shouldn't be down there. That's a safety factor. But also, we have people that are living down there on the beach itself. There's a home set, set up down there where somebody's got their belongings, as well as a makeshift camp. The road needs a little work. I understand with our economy now, the funding's not there for our roads, but who's responsible for this? Is this the park or is this the county? If it's the county, why can't our county maintain that road if it's a county road? If it's the park, why do we not have the park ranger down there visiting this area, picking up the trash in this area, cleaning up this area to make it safe? All these people are asking for is for you as the Commissioners to look at what we can do to resolve this issue in that community. If it's locked the gate, then let's lock a gate. If it's not locked the gate and let the fishermen's go in there at nighttime, that's a great ideal. It brings revenue to our community. But then we also need to have somebody periodically check in that area at nighttime for people that are down there not to fish or to be on the lake that are down there doing things they should not do. I ask for you as the Committee to look at this. Any input that you could give me, I'm welcome to hear from any of you Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Wayne Holden, 8150 West Point Drive. I called Mr. Curtis myself and talked to him, and he says, the only way that you could sue us is if we were disturbing the council. So if you don't got grounds to sue us for our placards and for causing us to turn our shirts inside out, which I didn't have mine out, I did have the placard, though, the little plastic thing. Mr. Curtis said, there would be no way that you could sue us because we were not disturbing the council meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? I want to call your attention to the announcements under item number 14 regarding next month's meeting, but in particular, I want you to look at item C and not forget that we have a Budget Hearing Committee, uh, May the 24th at 5:00 PM here in this courtroom. We stand adjourned.